This meeting is being made available. I know we need to gavel back the public through a live video and audio broadcast on Comcast Government Access Channel 15 and is being recorded for broadcast at future dates. Comments made in open session will be recorded. Welcome to the Wednesday, July 10, 2024 Select Board Meeting. Please join me. And we're signing the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America, into your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up, we have candidates for reappointment to the Historic District Commission. Elizabeth Bates, term to expire 2027. Kyle Carney, term to expire 2027. And Miles Prescott, term to expire 2027. We table this from our last meeting so we can have a discussion tonight. We have some questions for the members who are up for reappointment. Do we want to have discussion here first or have?
Well, since we did discuss it our last meeting, I would say those who are up for reappointment to come on up and see whether there's any questions for them.
Sure. Do we want to start with anybody specific?
Well, I think Kyle said he wanted to go first.
Actually, I don't have any questions for you, but Kyle's welcome.
Hi. Hello, everyone again. We meet again.
We meet again.
Hi.
Hi, Miles. Thank you.
Yeah, well, exactly. But Kyle stood up first.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, can't see him over Steve.
So, you know, we had some questions for you about your appointment. Did anybody want to start before I went in?
Yeah, I can start. Why not? Like I said, we have a lot of information here on what the Historic District Commission has and has not done in the past.
Okay.
And we got, we have concerns because if you're not doing these things properly in procedure, you're breaking Mass General Law, Open Meeting Law, which basically not posting minutes properly within so many years. Concern about actually not.
Oh.
I've got a couple more concerns of basically with the bylaws themselves. But like I said, that's the biggest one, especially since you're co-chair. Is that correct?
I am correct. Yep, that's correct.
Okay. Now, under our bylaws, that's not appropriate. It's supposed to be chair, vice chair, and/or clerk or secretary.
Okay.
So, and by that happening, under that, the way you change that bylaw, you have to go to town meeting to do so. So, but not knowing that. And how long have you been in the committee, sir?
I'm one of the newer, the newer people. We've had people here longer, so.
But how long have you been in the committee, sir?
Five or six years.
Okay. Like I said, these are our bylaws for the town. And being on this committee for five or six years, you know, you, I would believe, and so my committee would believe that you've read.
So, so can I ask you a question?
Please.
So, you said the things we have done. Do you have a documentation of that? Because I feel that what we've done for the Historic Commission and the people that, if you interviewed all the people that came and we helped out and did our good jobs, like Judy Parks here, who I wrote a recommendation for, and you guys approved the easement. Thank you very much. Those things, if you don't consider those two, then, you know, you really got to look at the whole picture, I feel. So, yeah, we.
But you broke open meeting law. And that doesn't help us out.
I don't post the minutes. I don't post the minutes.
It doesn't matter. Basically, you're, you guys are in charge of it since you are one of the chairs, even though it's not appropriate to do so.
So, we have another co-chair here, too. So.
That's correct.
Do you want to interview him as well?
Well, you're up for reappointment. So, I'm going to ask, basically, this is the reason why we ask these questions, to basically making sure that you understand your role and rules and regulations of the Historic District Commission.
Okay.
At least for the town of Pembroke.
This is the first time that it's been brought up to me. So, I feel like we can proceed in the way you'd like us to do it. But I think, I don't think you can just say, okay, that's it, you know? I think we, this is kind of blindsided us. We just, you know, heard about this now. So.
Well, I don't think that's the only issue. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to follow up on that. So, Miles, you were alluding to some of the good things you've done in town as a committee, and that's true. But what John's referencing is really administrative tasks that need to be done. And what I would suggest is the committee, either the chair or the clerk, or someone that you appoint, or someone wants to volunteer, get in touch with the town hall, get in touch with the selectman's office.
Yeah.
And, you know, we, we have a whole list of what minutes were submitted, what weren't, and where the voids are. So, those voids have to be filled. And going forward, obviously, we have to maintain them on a timely basis. And so, what John's referring to are administrative tasks that could be easily taken care of. And you don't need us to, I mean, we have the laundry list here. You don't need them from us.
As Steve and I will tell you, we're not, we're not, we're not really, we don't, we're not really record keepers. So, it's probably better to, you know, have another chairman on the committee. That's fine with me if, if we have somebody that has more due diligence than it. I do a lot of other things, Historical Society, other, other activities. So, I don't mind just being a member. It's just, there's a lot, we get a lot of activity. And before, you know, Libby would cover all that. And so, you need two men to replace one woman, essentially, right?
So, so I've been, I've been in a lot of, a lot of boards and committees. And the chair is responsible for, for making those administrative tasks happen. But you don't have to be the person doing it. You can assign, assign anyone on the committee to do that, to take the minutes, to post them. And then, you bring them back to the board and vote as a board on them before they become public. But in the meantime, you could write drafts and, and submit drafts. And when you, when I say submit them, I mean, you email Sabrina at town hall, or someone, someone in Bill's office. And that's really, that's the easiest way to go about it. Just designate someone on the committee to be the lead person to do that and work with Bill's office.
So, there is a person that's, that was sending them, but she, she thought she had sent them on. She had them done, but they were.
Yeah.
I missed, I missed them off. So, I missed posting the date for my minutes.
Okay.
Can I comment, Dan?
Sure.
There was 69 meetings, and there's eight sets of minutes. And four of them were brought in last month. So, that's not, you didn't miss a month. I mean, this is, this is heavy. As, as co-chair, this, this really falls on you.
Oh, does it?
Well, you're both chair. I don't know why that worked out that way. But, I mean, that's, that's an excessive amount of minutes.
No one was taking minutes. I, I started to take minutes getting them approved. I have, I have copies. You know, I have some copies I can, I can get to you, but.
But people don't know how you voted, when you met, what you discussed. I mean, all this is lost. It's never going to, it's never coming back.
The first time I ever heard about this, about the meeting notes, was someone, not even one of you, not even one in the town, someone in the Historical Society, definitely about, about it. And so, we started doing that. You, I mean, we have a job, but we're all volunteers. We have a lot of stuff going on. You, I think you guys need to educate everybody because we're not the only ones that make mistakes. Everybody makes mistakes.
Every board holds minutes. Every board has minutes in the town. And if something controversial comes up, you can't look back and see who discussed what, who voted where. And there's a certain distrust now, I believe, with the taxpayers and your board, because they can't look into what you voted on and who voted there.
How many really do that, though?
We, we, every time.
It's similar to like, we need a, if we need a.
Because they're the only board. So, you're the only board in this town that has minutes missing to this degree. There, there may be one or two other boards of the multiple boards and committees we have that are missing one set of minutes. But we went through not just your board, but every board in the town.
But I think we're also the only one that doesn't have any administrative help, too.
That's not true. There's only five boards of the many boards and committees in the town that.
Some other people that have been here longer can, can speak for that. But, but, you know, as I said, you know, we're hap, we're happy to follow, follow what we need to do. But it's, it's kind of like, we wish we would have known about this earlier because.
But every single, every single time someone.
This is the first time, like, why is this, why is this thing happening now?
Every single time someone's been appointed, you get a packet that tells you everything the committee members have to do. And you, you certainly were handed that, certainly. So, that's fine. If someone from the committee reaches out to town hall, you can work through this and get through it. And then, do what you can about the past, but also going forward. Write the minutes, write their votes.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
I think, I just want to say something. I think what we're looking for here also is more ownership and accountability to the situation. So, hearing something like, you know, oh, well, we didn't know. It's your job to inform us, et cetera, so on and so forth. We're all boards and committees. We're all conducting the business of the town. And the select board, my understanding of the history, the way the relationship has been, has been a respect out of the autonomy for the different boards and commissions. And that autonomy, what comes with that autonomy is the responsibility to know what is our responsibility to do. It's in Mass General Law, Open Meeting Law. It's in, if I could finish, it's in our bylaws, our town bylaws, in terms of how a committee is supposed to be structured. It's in our bylaws and Open Meeting Law that you have to post minutes. I mean, it's basic. Posting minutes is the most basic thing that we, that we need to do. Attendance is basic. And there's serious attendance issues, too, that haven't been managed by the chair or chairs or whatever the deal is. So, there, there are a lot of quantifiable concerns. And these, this is all public, by the way.
Right.
This is all public. So, everyone, everyone can verify this. Now, this is private information.
So, yeah, so I, I'd like to, so in one case, there's some, with attendance, there's some severe health issues going on. We had one member just resign. And, you know, it's tough to get, you know, keep meetings going and stuff, you know? Do we get an alternate? Because we, we're like fighting to get the quorum. And, you know, people are, you know, someone was in the hospital. We had someone just resign. We have a new member now. So, that.
We have years worth of attendance issues or meeting minutes that we can't determine what the attendance was, too. So, and yet, there's recommendations that continue. And there's no, the administration, the management of those who are not attending is not, you know, a situation of, hey, you know, is it a good time to maybe step back, free up the seat for somebody else? Because these things, these things happen, of course. But if there, there's a, there's a level of engagement in the town right now that's taking place, which is amazing. The citizenry is very engaged, which is awesome, whether you're a Republican, a Democrat, an unaffiliated, whatever the deal is. There are folks who want to help with the town. And our boards and committees are responsible for conducting the business of the town and exercising judgment to the point where you could be, we could be making decisions for tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands, millions of dollars. And so, really sound judgment is required. And that includes posting minutes, attending meetings. And if we can't do that, we should free up our seat for those who have. And if we can't do that, we should free up our seat for those who have the capacity or the ability to do it.
You have a record of everything we've submitted, and we get a lot of, we're not going to have a meeting if, just for the sake of a meeting. We're going to have a meeting if, we've had dozens and dozens of people come here for sign approval, we're prompt, we go out of our way. You guys should look at that as well, as just, you're focusing on two things, and.
We're talking about the things that are, these are basic, Miles. Attendance is basic. Posting minutes is basic. We're talking about open meeting law.
You're not even looking at that.
But here's the thing, though, is that, is that.
But, so there's another thing.
Please.
Miles, nobody's negating the work that you do in this town. None of us. Your board has done so much, and not just your board, but you yourself, has done so much. This has absolutely nothing to do with that. I know that you're saying, look at this thing as opposed to this.
But I want to say that, okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
These are still, regardless of that, these are still things that have to be done. It's not about, well, you excel here, so therefore you shouldn't have to do these things, or saying, well, how many people look at the minutes? It doesn't matter. If nobody ever looks at those minutes, they still have to be submitted and posted. It's just what has to be done.
Right.
And then your board, your committee being set up a certain way and saying there's no administrative help, that's the way it is. Your board is set up that way. You don't have that extra person, so you have a Chair, you have a Clerk to take over these responsibilities, and that is just the way it is. So, it's not taking anything away from anything that you've done. That's not what we're saying at all.
Right, and I appreciate that, and I think Dan, you know, Dan made a good point, you know. We're not perfect. We need improvement. Everybody does. And I think for me, I've lived, this is the first time I've lived anywhere for 20 years. Like, before this, five or six years, moving to town to town. This is the first time I got involved in, I got involved in Historic Society, and then they needed someone for Historic Commission. I got Scott involved in the Historic Commission. I'm basically a rookie. I was kind of, you know, new to this stuff, so I mean, I kind of feel like.
But you still have to follow the protocol.
I appreciate that, but I just, I just feel like this should have, this should have happened three or four years ago.
Can I give you some impotence to get these things done in a timely fashion? You folks are all either historians or interested in history. How do you do research of old Pembroke if you don't have the records? How are people going to do old records, old research records of 2017 with zero, with nine meetings and zero minutes? So.
Do you think they're going to care about us?
Miles, how long have you been Chair? Is this your first year or second?
No, no. Steve and I were co-chair. I don't know when, Libby.
Around. It's been a few years.
No. Five or six years. Three or four years.
I'm just wondering. And have you been co-chairs the whole time?
Yeah.
And then when you, who was the Chair before? Was it Libby? And Laura, how long have you been Clerk?
I've been taking minutes since middle of last year.
So, you just started that. So, who was Clerk before that?
We didn't really have one. I did some. I have some on my computer. I have some on my computer.
But who took the minutes? Who just took them?
I took minutes. Yeah, I have some on computer, but.
Yep, and a good technique for a board that meets sporadically and sometimes has trouble getting a quorum, you could submit without a vote of the board, a draft of the minutes, and you write draft. And the next meeting that you have, that you have a quorum, you can take that draft and vote on it, and that'll be the official minutes. But submitting that draft in a timely fashion is a good mechanism to use for a board like yours. It's been used successfully in the past.
So, like the last way you had, before we have our next meeting, she should send that to, as a draft?
We're happy to do that.
But you're not going to post, you're not going to post a draft, though?
You can.
You can.
Yeah, as long as it's titled draft, it has not been voted on.
Okay. I didn't know that.
They'll go right on the town website, and then that'll be taken down once you have a vote for the official.
Yeah.
Because you have to vote the minutes every meeting also.
I'm just, I'm just great. I strongly recommend that any board or committee who is going to have 30 days in between the meetings, post a draft. It just, under the open meeting law, just covers us as a community.
Okay. Well, I've probably said enough. I know you need to talk to some other people, so.
No, and also, but the one thing, too, is especially since we were talking about minutes because of COVID. I know that your commission was on Zoom, too, because I was able to see those meetings actually via Zoom. So, you can actually get those minutes from those meetings and backtrack if you need to.
During COVID.
During COVID.
So, they're on the town.
They've been recorded.
I don't have access to it, but.
That was on, well, that was on the local scene via Zoom, so you'd have to actually talk to.
Good, good.
Yeah, they archive all the meetings.
Yeah, they do.
We can't have, we don't have internet access at Bethel Chapel, so.
Well, that's another thing I'd like to discuss later on, too.
Yeah, okay.
You said you had trouble meeting quorum? Are you having trouble meeting quorum?
Well, now, now we have Jay, so that helps, but we had two people that were, that had health conditions. So, that's seven. We're down to five. So, if we don't get, if one person's missing, you know, then we can't have the quorum, so.
Another good mechanism for a board like yours that, you know, say the Council on Agent, for instance, where there are some infirm people, but they still want to join the meeting, but they can't leave their home or they're away. They can call in and actually be on the meeting officially.
But you have to take a roll call vote because they're not physically there.
Yeah, there's certain rules and regulations to it, but mass general law allows for it.
And does any other committees have, like, alternates, if, at all, or is that not?
Generally speaking, unless the statute applies alternates, and I'll give you the example. The statute for zoning board, Zoning Board of Appeals, puts alternates in place. Generally, there aren't alternates on boards or committees, unless it's, yeah.
So, if you're having trouble getting a quorum, and there's certain people not showing up, if people call in to see if there's a seat open, there is not. So, essentially, those people become placeholders. So, other people can't get involved, and it kind of pushes everybody else away. So, if you're having trouble, it would be good to open up membership.
Well, we have Jay now, so it's going to help. It's going to help a lot, so.
And would the expectation be that you would normally reorganize after this reappointment, or when do you reorganize normally?
That's, I'm not as familiar with that. Other people can speak on that.
I think it would make sense to reorganize after.
Is that Scott?
Right up to the annual election.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
Or annual appointments.
Yeah. Yeah, and I would strongly suggest you do it in a normal progression, Chair, Vice Chair, Clerk. And, you know, you could be kind of co-chairs, but really, one person should have the title.
That's correct.
Okay.
I mean, you could all, I mean, there are committees that, like, every single person is an equal member, and there are no egos involved and that sort of thing, and that's cool, but someone's named Chair.
Yeah. Does that work when you have everyone the same?
You still have a named Chair.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, even with our board, because, like I said.
Right, you change.
We have everything, but we have all equal rights as Select Board members. They have the same authority as everyone, but it went Chair, Vice, Clerk.
And you're the Clerk now.
Right now, exactly, and it's voted by us.
Okay.
Does anybody else have anything further? Do you have any questions for us?
Nope, nope. You've answered everything. I know you have other people to talk to.
And I know you talked for the group. Is anyone else that are reapplying tonight that want to speak, or does anyone?
We were going to. I'm sorry. No, it's okay. Did you forget? That's okay. No, you can sit. Go ahead. Did anybody have anything else for Miles, or do we want to vote on everybody individually?
Individually.
Are we going to let other people?
Do we want to speak before we actually?
Well, yeah, I was thinking, we have two other appointments.
We do.
And if they wanted to say something, it would be helpful.
We didn't actually have any questions for you. I don't know if anybody else. What about Libby? Would we like to?
And she wants to speak on her behalf, please.
You can stay there if you'd rather.
Just bring her a microphone.
You can stay there. We can bring you a mic.
Steve, Steve.
Steve, can you take the microphone to her?
What?
Take the microphone to her, please, right there. Thank you.
So, people can hear it all.
Libby, have a seat. You're fine.
Good evening. Just for the record, my name's Elizabeth Bates. I've been a member of the Historical Commission for 10,000 years, but actually 43 years, I believe. I don't, haven't met this man, this man, and I've met you in passing, but it would be nice to meet you formally. Would you introduce yourself to us?
My name is Richard Flynn.
Good. And you have been on the Board of Selectmen?
A year.
A year. Steven?
Yeah, Steve Ciciotti, Vice Chair, since 2022.
Good. Tracy?
Hi, Libby. We've met. I've been on the Board. This is my fourth year.
Okay. Well, do you want to start asking questions, or do you want me to make a statement?
What would you prefer?
Say again?
What would you prefer?
It's what you would prefer. You are the Board of Selectmen.
Why don't you share your statement with us first?
Okay. As I said, I've been a member of the Historical Commission for 42 or 3 years. Can't remember exactly. I joined the Commission when I moved to town, and I met a gentleman by the name of Bob O'Hara. Dan, you must remember Bob.
He was a little bit before my time, but I know his reputation.
Know his reputation. Bob was an awesome guy, and he encouraged me to get on board. There was a number of projects that he thought that we should address. So, I said, fine. And in the process of raising four children and volunteering for this committee for 40-plus years, I went on. I became an elected member of the Board of Assessors, and I've done that since 1990, only 33 years. So, some of the projects that we have done during that time, and I'm really not interested in getting into a, you know, head-banging issue here about minutes, because I know I took the minutes. I know I turned them in when I was Chairman. The original Chair was a gentleman by the name of Walter Frisbee. Walter stepped down. He's since passed away. And I kind of stepped in to fill the gap. I am a graduate with a degree in history, so that seemed appropriate. I love history. And also being involved in my town and town government. I've been an elected assessor for so many years now. I've worked for the towns of Acushnet, Harvard, Marshfield, Hanson, and of course Pembroke. One of the first projects we did on the Historical Commission during my time as Chair was, and along with the assistance of other members of the committee, was to form two historic districts. Chapter 40C, Mass General Laws. The first one is North Pembroke, because we knew this would help us with the Quaker Meeting House issue. The second one is Center Protection District, and those are 40C historic districts. What we do in those districts is people who own property, real estate, houses, whatever, they want to make a renovation alternative or what to their property. They come in, they file an application. It's a one-page application. It doesn't take rocket science. Some of them are obviously more complicated than others because they're bigger projects, but generally, we're able to manage those in one meeting. We try to keep it simple, stupid, have a KISS method. And we do that. Now, as far as taking attendance, while I was Chair, I always took attendance. There was always minutes, and they always got brought to Town Hall. But you know what? When we brought them to Town Hall, suddenly, in the last couple of years, all of our records have been hidden in the attic. Thank you for your respect. Hidden in the attic. So, I'm not able to go over stairs, and there's no elevator to the attic, so I don't get up there. But I have probably most of the records from that time. We did have a file cabinet in which there was a folder for every single parcel address in each of the districts in there. Anytime we acted on one, pulled the file, we added to it. There'd be a lot of the records that you seem to think are missing would be in there. I can't speak for the last couple of years, but I know that they have been addressed, and it hasn't been neglected because we're neglectful. They just, they may exist. They may exist somewhere. But I'm not going to apologize for them not being available tonight, unless you want to help me go up into the attic and find the file cabinet, which I don't think you do. But everything had its own folder. It had its own address. It had its own, you know, district, street address. Among the things that were important to us in the early stages was the Friends Meeting House. There was a lot of misinformation, much of it published by the town, about the Friends Meeting House. We clarified a lot of that. We got money from the state, from the Massachusetts Historical Commission, to do repairs and some renovations to that building. That building is precious. It's the most important historic building in the town Pembroke, bar none. And I go to St. Eclus, so you can't hold that against me. So, we addressed the Friends Meeting House. We have been addressing it for 40 years, either with paint, new roof, siding. We've tried to, and it's not a town-owned building. It's owned by the Historical Society. It's a privately-owned building. But in reality, the town has a vested interest in that building. They have a rider to the deed, which gives that to the town. So, we've gotten some money from the town to do some significant work to that building. It is the most important building in town. And thankfully, the town mows the lawn, you know, keeps it nice. We just had, with a grant, the Historical Commission just got a grant to have the stone wall rebuilt. The stones were falling down, and that happened. And, you know, these aren't inexpensive projects anymore. So, we had that done there. And of course, the ongoing, day-to-day, week-to-week restoration and maintenance of a building like that, it's just ongoing. It's never going to go away as long as that building is there. And the Historical Commission has taken it upon their shoulders to do, for the responsibility for doing those things. There's no news stories. There's no highlights. There's no arguing about minutes and attendance. And, like Miles, you know, I apologize for the ones that appear to be missing. I know they are, but they appear to be missing. And we have no clerical help. Every other board and commission in town has somebody.
It's not true.
It's not true. The majorities are not.
Not true?
It's not true.
They don't have meetings and have, well, it doesn't matter. I won't argue the point with you. Well, I'll take your word for it. So, we renovated Friends Meeting House. Then we took on the Bethel Chapel, which was fire damaged. Somebody tried to torch it and burn it down. We saved it. We restored it. We made it. It's a town-owned building. We've maintained it. We have kept. We've maintained it. We have kept it, kept the records. And it's there for the public to use. We have a very, very minor rental cost to use that building. Someone is having a family party, graduation party, whatever. They can use the building for a set number of hours. I'll go down and make sure the lights are on, and I'll go down and make sure the lights are off. And I don't have to do that. But I live practically across the street, so I've been doing that for ten, twenty, thirty, forty years.
Libby, I don't think anybody's questioning everything that you're saying.
No, you are. You are questioning. You absolutely are.
Not, but what's been done?
You're questioning minor things. And I don't, and I do not suggest, when I say minor, that minutes and attendance are minor. They're not. They're very important. I've always taken them. I've always filed them. But I haven't been the Chairman for four or five years.
Yeah, I just want to make it clear, Libby. The minutes that are missing are not the minutes you're referencing. The minutes that are missing are more recent minutes. We have all the minutes from your tenure as Chair.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. I understand what you're saying. And as Miles promised, we will address that. We've always done everything by the book.
I have a question for you.
Shoot.
I know this is a volunteer position, and I appreciate your service. Do you know how many meetings you've missed in 2024?
Most of them. I've had COVID twice. I had respiratory virus. I had surgery. I had my knee operated on. I've been sick a lot the last year or so. But ask me about the prior forty years.
Well, we only have eight sets of minutes. We only have eight sets of minutes in the last sixty-nine meetings. And you missed six meetings out of the eight minutes that we have.
Are you telling me that I didn't give them to you?
No, no. I'm saying that you only attended six of those meetings. And, I'm sorry, you missed six out of the eight. And I just, I understand health conditions, but, you know, maybe it's time that you let somebody else come in and take a seat that can attend meetings.
Oh, don't worry. I've thought about that. Because if you want to fire me, I'm not going to let you.
Well, I'm voting no tonight.
Fine.
Ask him why he's not voting no tonight.
Well, I just explained why.
No, I don't think so.
Do you want, do you want to come up?
I think you're on record. I think you're on record on.
I'd be happy to talk about anything.
Can I complete, can I complete what I'm going to say?
Wait a second, guys.
Your litmus test will be whether or not, how we would roll on the Turner House. And you're sitting there.
I was voting on that anyways, and then this came up. And this is heavy.
All right, Rich. Steve. Steve, can you just wait? If you want to come up and talk?
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. But you come up and talk after Libby would like it.
Yeah, well, you know, when you're on a board for forty years, you've got a lot to say.
I believe it.
So we did the Bethel Chapel, restored that, made it a public, well, it is a public building. We've maintained it. We've made it available to the citizens of the town if they want to rent it. Maybe I'm mistaken mentioning this at this point. But we've also got the issue of the Turner House. And I know that's what this meeting is all about. It's got nothing to do. You've looked for excuses. You've looked for ammunition to use against this commission. No, no, you have.
Libby, I can't speak for everybody personally. I can only speak for myself. And each person here can only speak for themselves. That is not what this is about for me. It is not at all.
And the assumption, basically, saying that this board is basically out to get you is unfair. Libby, you can't be saying that overall, especially in a public meeting, sitting there and accusing us because of a building on 53 and 14. That is wrong. This right here, especially for yourself, is because your attendance, even though health issues that may be throughout these years that we have in front of us, you have not attended.
What about the prior forty years?
And usually after.
What about the prior forty years?
After three appearances itself, your commission or board will sit there and say, "If you're not able to make these," I did the same thing in advisory. Someone couldn't make their meetings, and I asked him to step down. This is all about, basically, making sure you have cohesiveness on your commission. To say, basically, it's about a building on 53 is unfair.
I think it's safe to say we have a pretty cohesive board.
I know, but it's unfair, basically, telling that this board is out to get you because of the Turner House. That is wrong.
You may think so. No. Sit down.
All right, I'm pleased with us.
I'm about to conclude. So I'm sorry I've taken so much of your time. I've tried to educate you on what we do and what we have done over the last forty-plus years, and that we do take care to take minutes and to take attendance. And if it's fallen through the crack someplace, I'm not responsible, nor do I hold them responsible. We can, we can clean up the process. That's, that's, that's a no-brainer. And that's what the beginning of this meeting was about. But it's not what this meeting is about. So I am going to conclude my statements with saying, "If you want to fire me, you can. I quit."
Miles?
Okay, so Libby mentioned some things. And, and I know sometimes we don't look at the past. We're looking at, you know, our current, our current, you know, you're only as good as your last book or whatever, like that. But also, I know that, I know that there are issues about, about the public safety that's become a big issue with the history and everything like that. There's been different opinions and things like that. But for one of you to post that the Turner House is not historic, I just feel like, do you read anything? Do you read any history? So, so even without, even without John Turner that lived on the property, yeah, maybe he didn't live in that house, but there's remnants in that house that are, that are in the 1700s. But need to say, he lived on that property. He wrote the resolves. And, and I know there's at least three of you who are opposed to the Turner House. And so for you to ju, for you to vote on us, I think it's, I think it's a conflict of interest. Because you're, because if someone's saying they're not going to vote if we support the Turner House, and everybody here supports the Turner House and a lot of other people, and that's probably why you didn't demo it before, and we decided, we agreed to move it. So to let you know about the Turner House. So the records in the thing are at least eighteen-twenty. Does anyone know the West Box Factory? Do you know what that is? Do you know the history of that? So that, that building was, that was a mill for the Quakers. We have Justine Huntley here, who, her family came to Pembroke in the eighteen, early 1800s at the Quaker Meeting House. They set up the West Box Mill Factory. And by the way, they lived in the Turner House. It's connect, this, this West Box Mill Factory had a hundred people working for it. It was one of the most successful businesses in Pembroke. And the Turner House was connected to it. So even without the resolves or any of that, it stands on its own. If you'd like to take a look. So it's a historic, and in the, in the report I showed you this. They kind of got, you know, because the people that did the study did not think it was from that period.
I appreciate this, but this is not where, when I hit a debate it tonight, that's not where.
I'm just trying to educate, because there's a lot of misinformation.
I understand.
You're, you're the Chair, you're the top, and some of your people are posting things.
Do you want to discuss my post?
If you want to.
And you said I had, did you say I had no rights?
Perhaps not during, maybe we could say that.
You made a point, and you made a point.
I had every right, as the appointing authority.
It's a conflict of interest.
If you want to talk about the post, we can do that during public comment if you'd like. But let's not do that during this. But this is about reappointments. This is about reappointments. I know where you're coming from. I understand. I do. But that's not what this conversation is about.
I think it's very disrespectful to name something, a building that you have no information on, and they're saying it's not historic.
But this conversation is about reappointments.
But, but this has come out. It's come out about this, at least three of you that are against it. And, and by the way, every year you get up and we invite you to do a reading of the resolves of John Turner. How can you, how can you do a resolves reading if you don't support his property, the man, what he did?
But this isn't about support for that. It's not about supporting or not supporting for that.
It is.
It's not. Steve, did you want to say something before we talked about the reappointments?
First of all.
Can you come up, please?
I think this is about the Turner House.
If he's going to speak of this, I'm going to speak on this, just so you know.
Do we want to talk about the candidates for reappointment?
I just think that it's, that to say that this is about, the candidates for reappointment are being judged based on.
It's outside of the scope of the agenda item.
It's outside of the scope of the agenda item.
We can't speak about this right now.
I think what you said is that there are some holes in our record-keeping.
Yes.
And, and I agree with Miles. I'm squirming over here too, because I'm not a good record-keeper. And I think we, we have, Miles has addressed that. I think going forward, we're going to do a better job of that, if there are any of us left to do the job.
I've heard nothing but pushback, to be honest with you, from both Ms. Bates and Miles.
Pushback for what?
Well, no, you had, you had said that we were looking at this inaccurately, and we did, we're not looking at the good stuff. And, and, you know, I didn't know. I mean, I just, I felt it was more pushback than capitulation.
Well, all right, as far as, as far as your statement on Facebook is concerned, I see if that's your litmus test, then what's the point of, I mean, if you bullied the person that literally wrote the book on Pembroke history off of my board?
I bullied her?
That's what I heard. Yeah.
She's a, she's a standing member of your committee.
And you, and so basically, missing meetings because of COVID. And, and a number of health concerns.
I'm sorry she had health issues, but she's not attending meetings. And she's a placeholder, she's a placeholder right now.
Not for me. I can pick up the phone and ask Libby to fill in gaps in my knowledge of Pembroke history anytime I want to.
She's not attending meetings. She's not attending meetings.
Well, I mean, part of what we do is to assess properties, to help homeowners decide what the value of their properties is.
But if there's foreign issues, and you have somebody not attending meetings, isn't that something?
I'm saying, you're free to vote, you're free to vote whatever way you want.
Can you address me, please?
This is open meeting violation.
I don't mean to be disrespectful to you.
No, it's okay. We're just getting far off what we were supposed to be speaking about. So do you have anything to say about the reappointments? Because if that's not what we want to talk about, I need you to.
All right, I guess all I'll say is that I'm in support of all three candidates. They've done a fine job. I think a lot of the, a lot of the, you know, a lot of the holes in the, in the meeting notes and so forth are probably more my fault than Miles's. So I'll accept that. And, and, and you can expect better, you know, better compliance in terms of the, of the meeting notes and so forth, and communication with Town Hall.
And I understand that. It's just that you're not up for reappointment.
Exactly.
But that's why we're questioning Miles and not you. It's not because we're just picking on the lines.
No, I understand that. I understand.
And for you to make a statement and say, "We're just not good at it," and I understand that, but maybe that's not the position to take as a Chair, if you're not good at that piece of it.
Right. Well, that's, I'm taking that under advisement, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Did you have something?
I did. I challenged the town manager's assessment of an open meeting violation. I think if the Turner House, any thought or deliberation about the Turner House property relates to a vote here tonight, whether to appoint or not to reappoint somebody, then it's relevant to what's on the agenda. And I, I have something to say about that. I, I didn't read Steve's post. See, I don't even know who posted it. So, so it's nothing to do, this is my own thought and feeling about whether someone should be reappointed or not based on the Turner property. So I disagreed with the vote of your committee, your board, to keep the Turner House. We had to pay an extra million dollars. We had to move it. We had to do all this stuff. But I also acknowledged that we, this board hired you to make decisions. And you made a decision. I don't agree with the decision, but I hired you to make decisions. I didn't hire you to make my decision. I hired you to make the decision. And I disagree with it. But I hired you to do that. And so I would not, not reappoint somebody because you made a decision I didn't like. That's how I feel about that.
And to add, to add on to what Dan was saying, the town voted on it, to move it. And we went through everything and anything between the Public Safety Building Committee and your commission. And taking it off what was, we gave you options. But instead, we took it off the public safety of demolition that you could have voted on, because you wanted to work with the town. So we did that and said, "Fine. You can get to vote on moving it." And like I said, the town approved it via the town meeting vote and also at the ballot. So that's the reason why, and then I'm with Dan, too. I was disagreeing on that because of public safety for me and a lot of us in town is very important to us for the safety of our individual citizens. Bottom line, if and or buts, doesn't matter what is there, whatever, what we're trying to do, but as long as we're working together, that's what it's about. Like I said, the assumption that basically that we are here to basically say, "Gotcha game" between appointees, one that is wrong and disrespectful to you, to our town, and also what you do for your commission. And that's period. That's period. That's, that's all it's about. So if you think something else, then that's up to you.
Goddamn.
I just wanted to put this out to its logical conclusion, if it was going to go that way. If three members were voted out and three people that were amenable to tearing down the Turner House were voting in, if we play out that scenario, then that, if your future, your future commission votes to rescind that vote, then what happens? Well, guess what? Now we'd have to go to town meeting. We'd have to redo town meeting. We'd have to go to, have another town election, because it was, it's a ballot initiative. It goes to the State House. The entire legislature votes on it, and it's signed by the governor, just to save a million dollars by, by tearing it down and putting an extra couple of parking spots there, changing where the septic is. So to do all that for what the town has already voted for, the people at town meeting voted for it, knowing the consequences of the Turner House. People at the election did the same, and same with the entire legislature and governor. Every single person knew that the Turner House, Mr. Turner didn't live there. Everyone knew that or should have known that. And they all voted that way. And why I would love to save a million dollars and put the septic system on that lot in a better spot, that ship has sailed.
Correct. With all due respect, Dan, there wasn't, there wasn't a single mention, the word Turner House was not mentioned at town meeting, not once. I, I came to that town meeting with a ream of papers to defend. I spent days preparing for that town meeting, ready to stand up and defend the historic value of the Turner House. And it never came up, not once.
It was part of the motion, though.
The promise that was made, the deal that was made was by the Select Board that, that the Turner House would, would be moved, not, not the town meeting. There was no mention in the, in the town meeting.
Yeah, it was part of the motion, because that's what the legislature voted on.
Correct. They voted on the 26 million, the, whatever the value was about.
That was included in that.
Right.
It was there. It was just included.
I understood. And there wasn't an argument at town meeting floor which kind of, which solidifies your side? Where were the people then? Against it, right?
I, I would have worried about, I was worried that the Turner House would come up at that, at that meeting, because I was worried that it would save the public safety vote. I mean, I, I was in favor of the public, so I voted for it. Back when we, when we started looking at the Turner House as a viable property for the town to do something with it, for the Historical Commission to do something with it, it was known by the town. As a matter of fact, the fact that, that the property is available to the town, was purchased by the town, was because the Historical Commission refused to allow the Benson's family to wreck the building. They wanted to, they wanted to give us the Turner House and offer it as a parcel across the street to move it to at one point. So the fact, the fact that, that, that piece of land is available to the town is because of the Historical Commission. But, you know, we've been trying, we've been trying to save that thing for a long time. I wish that, that building wasn't moved. I don't think it needed to be moved. I think that, I think the public safety vote could have gone up without it. It was originally going to be just a, just a firehouse. And then when they had police and fire, they made it, you know, doubled the size of it, and made it, made the Turner. it, and made it, made the Turner House in the way.
Let me just say one thing. If this was a standalone vote for the Turner House to be moved for a million dollars, septic system, foundation, it not would have gone through town meeting. But because you had us over a barrel, you, that was your, your district, it had to be part of the public safety building, and that's why it passed, not because people thought it was a good idea.
I wouldn't disagree with that at all. I don't, I don't like the phrase "over a barrel." I mean, I think we're trying to do the best we can to preserve historic properties with the people's community.
Rich, I think the one million, I feel that that was...
If somebody needs to speak, you have to come up, so everybody here...
I think the one million, I got some other estimates from a moving company down on the Cape, and I think a million dollars is, is, was an overestimate. Also, the town budget is 60 million. It may, it may go up, you know? So you're talking about 1%, possibly 1% of the total, but it seems like it's, it's...
We're getting so far off.
Still a million dollars. What is the purpose of this vote? What is the usefulness of it?
Oh, you did ask that, you did ask that. Okay, so I will, I will...
I couldn't find anybody to explain that to me.
I did explain it on your, on your post. Did you not read it?
I don't know that I did, or maybe I didn't see you. I don't know that I know you.
But I, okay, so, the, first of all, I've stated the historic nature of the house from 1820.
Can I just stop you there?
Yeah.
I need to stop you there.
Not on the agenda.
He's asking, he asked me a question.
We really need to move on. I know, we need to end this conversation about the Turner House. This is not what we're here to discuss tonight. I appreciate your comments about it, but I don't think we need to go back and relive and redo all the information we've already discussed.
It's already passed.
I really think we need to take a vote and discuss the reappointments, if you would mind. Thank you. I'm sorry.
She's an appointment board.
The million dollar figure that's been thrown around quite liberally tonight is, I don't know where you get that from. There's no way that what you've been trying to do would cost a million dollars. We have put a new roof on the Turner House.
Steve, could you bring up your mic? Thank you.
Thanks. We've cleaned a significant amount of toxic waste out of the cellar at the Turner House, and that cost a sum of money. We've spent a lot of money on the house already, about $100,000, and it's, you know, a work in progress. We get very little money from the town, we go, we go for grants and so forth. But I'm just trying to point out that you're throwing out numbers like a million dollars. Show me the estimate.
But that's the line item in the, in the vote we took.
That doesn't mean it's going to cost a million dollars.
That is correct, that's why, that's why, that's why it's an estimate, and it's an estimate for the whole project, not just the Turner House.
The whole project being...
The whole project, that's part of it, because that's part of...
Oh, well, that's a big difference.
And we did speak about that in one of the meetings, Libby, so, and you were actually at that meeting, with the public safety building, for that one.
I don't know if we need to continue litigating this.
I'm not, I'm not going to beat a dead horse anymore.
I believe we need to move on.
I do want to address the, the use, the use, the use of the building, because that was...
Nope, not right now, Miles. We have to move on first.
Because we have a use for it, if you want to, if you want to come to our meeting, we can tell you.
We can also put that on the agenda and discuss it, but we do not have a...
It's a visitor center.
We do not have a...
It's going to be a visitor center.
Nope, we'll talk about it in the future, we will, but not right now. Does anybody on the board have anything else that they would like to ask or discuss before we move on?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to just make a few comments. I mean, only, speaking for myself, obviously, you know, many folks know my opinion on, you know, the Turner House, since this is part of the scope now. I'm not going to, I'm not going to get into details about the Turner House and my views on it, you know, but, one thing I will say is, regardless of my views on the Turner House, being for or against it, my concerns tonight have nothing to do with the Turner House. I'd be reappointing all of you right now if not for what I have in front of me, which are, which are, which are questions, serious concerns about attendance, very serious concerns about minutes, and just the nature of the way the discussion has gone tonight. Personally, I mean, what I'm seeing is a lack of ownership, a lack of accountability, a lot of excuses that it's, it's somebody else, it's the select board's fault that this has happened. And it does not give me confidence about the future of some of these appointments. If there was more ownership, if there was more accountability, then I would be more willing to, to make some of these appointments. But with the lack of taking ownership, the lack of accountability, pointing in at the select board's direction for the reason why there's not minutes posted, or why there's not attendance, and things like that, just seems disrespectful to the town, disrespectful to the board, disrespectful to the own commission itself. And one thing that we need to expect is some standards. We need to maintain some standards, we need to expect some standards. We cannot continue to enable this. And that's how I feel about it, in a nutshell.
Is that everybody?
We're going to vote individual, or...
Did you want to speak to the question? Can you come up? Yeah.
Do I need to say my name or anything?
Yes, please.
Karen Flashman. I, I do recall hearing both people who came up say that they did want to do better going forward with the administrative tasks, so I do think that there is accountability there, even if you are also hearing a lot of passionate statements about what they have done. And I think it's fair to maybe, since they're already restructuring, encourage them to use the new people that they have available for clerking abilities, to kind of work some of that stuff out to do better going forward, because clearly we have people who have a lot of knowledge and are passionate about what they're doing for the benefit of the town, who it would be a great loss to the town to lose them from the board, based on everything that they do do. So I would implore you to think about that before you remove anyone from the board, and maybe you could make a recommendation that they don't handle the administrative tasks going forward, just as a point of advisement, maybe during their restructuring. You can't do that? Okay. Then, then maybe they can do that on their own, knowing what they know now. But it seems really a shame to lose people who have so much to offer the town, when they seem to have the ability going forward to do a whole lot better, now that this all has come to light. So, thank you.
If you can. Do you want to?
Judy? Because I have a question to ask in general about myself.
Please, Bill.
Hi, I'm Judy Parks. I'm the chair of the Forable Housing Committee, and I'm on the Housing Authority Board, and I've chaired many committees in this town over the years. But I just want to say in the, sort of in general, about the administrative work of the committees. One thing is, every committee is required to submit an annual report to the town about what the work was for the, for the, that the committee did for the year. It would seem to me that it would be administratively smart, at that point, when that, when that is sent in, that there's a review of posting of agendas, posting of minutes, things like that, that's done on an annual basis, rather than wait years for these things to come up and become a crisis. Because I have to tell you, I never received a packet that said, "These are the things that are required to be, to be posted and submitted to the town," like the drafts, like the drafts. No, I never heard about posting drafts.
Well, not the drafts, it's not in that document.
Never heard of them. Okay, but I'm just saying, and I also had the luxury, when I chaired the zoning board, of having administrative help. So I'm just saying that, that, you know, there are people who are more savvy about some of these things than others, and I do think that, that the annual, annual report to the town is a good way to check these kind of things on a timely basis, so we, again, we don't have a problem where it becomes an ongoing issue. So I'm just saying, I'm saying that more in general, nothing to do with anybody, but from my own experience that, because I've been remiss submitting some minutes myself, I'm not going to say I haven't, but, you know, it's one of those things that I think it's...
61 out of 69?
No, 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 I'm not suggesting, no, no, I'm not, I'm not making any comment about anything at all, Bill. I'm just saying, you know, that there is, I think, a way of, of not having that become 61 out of 69. That's all, something that has to be done. Okay, thank you.
Judy, was there somebody else?
Yeah. I just had a quick question. Hi, Katrina Delaney. My question was about, I know you mentioned you have a paper in front of you, I was just wondering, like, where that came from? What, like, was it part of a review of all the boards and commissions?
No, it was a compiled list of the minutes that were missing from the Historical District Commission over the last few years.
But it, for the record, it was part of a review of all boards and commissions. We looked at missed meetings for all members of all boards and commissions, and missed minutes or postings from boards and commissions.
And how often does that happen?
Not often.
When was the last time that it happened?
This was the first time in many years.
It's been compiled, you mean?
Yeah, that it's been compiled, is that the question?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just wondering, like, the, the last time this level of detail was, was had with that.
We, we thought it was important to just do an overall check, and then board members were asking us to do an overall check for their appointments. I think it's a very good idea.
Yeah.
We would have never known.
Yeah, yeah. I, I was wondering if it maybe could be a process that is more systematized, because it sounds like a great idea to have that be part of something where we're able to find out sooner than many years. I know everybody has lots going on, but if we have a system, then it, maybe it won't happen.
Yeah, and I, and I just want to address something very quickly, because I am really frustrated as the town manager. There's a lot going on out there that we're not talking about tonight, okay? So I want to be clear that not appointing certain members of the committee is probably a good idea, okay? From my perspective as the town manager, I am very frustrated, things I'm not going to share in public, but I intend to meet with those members of this committee to clarify them.
Did you have something? Anybody else? Do you want to take this vote?
I would say just, so, just one thing in response to the, the process, et cetera. I do think it's important that we, I don't want to see this situation ruin the autonomy for the boards and commissions out there. We cannot be in a position where the select board has to micromanage or babysit minutes and attendance and things like that. We're, we're all adults, we're all volunteers, we're all trying to be engaged with the community, and we want to maintain autonomy. I don't think it would be good direction for the select board to start to micromanage and control and review constantly, to make sure everybody's doing what they should be doing. We should be able to rely on our boards and committees to be autonomous, and for the most part, all the boards and committees are and have been and continue to post minutes and attend, and when folks don't attend, they are not, they are not asked to, to go for the seat again. So I just want to state that I think it's important that we maintain autonomy, and we don't go in the direction of too much, too much tight oversight, in that sense, beyond reappointments and hoping for appropriate recommendations.
And I agree with that.
It shouldn't get to this point.
I, no, it shouldn't, and I agree with that, but it shouldn't, it wouldn't get to this point if we didn't. I think the annual review is a great idea, actually. There should be some sort of process there where we have a little bit more oversight.
I think some high-level review yearly, at the most, at the most. But we should maintain autonomy.
Suggestion...
Yes, Libby.
That the selectmen of the board should produce a handbook for all committees.
We actually have a handbook for the committees. Everybody's given, yeah.
Every time someone is reappointed, they get emailed a link to that book, that they can read it and download it.
One of my suggestions tonight was that we needed to do a little bit of updating of the handbook, but we've had one for many years. And it does explain things about posting agendas and sending in meeting minutes and when you should be doing that. All the information is in there, it's posted on our website. It used to be given to you physically, but I think we've gravitated a little bit to just handing it away.
So you don't have a pamphlet or booklet to hand out?
We have, yes.
Give it up, pass it.
We just, we moved over to digital, is all that's changed.
It's the same book, it's just emailed.
You could still get it, copy it if you'd like.
I prefer not to have it emailed, like, for a day of a book.
Well, you can always print it. Okay, do we want to move on to voting? Have we done the discussion?
Yeah, the only thing is the last statement from Mrs. Bates. Did you, are, are you just emphatically saying that you quit, or, so you're done? Is that correct? Because if so, then we don't have to vote on your reappointment. That's my concern. If you basically are just doing as...
Feel free to vote on it.
It's up to you.
It's up to you.
Well, indeed it is.
Do individual votes, or...
All right, if you feel allowed.
Hang on. Yes, please.
I move to, I move that Elizabeth Bates stay on as a committee member for the Historic District Commission, term to expire 2027.
Do you have a second?
Just say feels for a second, I'll move on.
Bill's a second.
I move that Kyle Harn continues on the Historic District Commission, term to expire 2027.
Second.
We have a vote, a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed.
I move that Miles Prescott continues on at the Historic District Commission, term to expire 2027. Reappoint. The letter shouldn't be recorded.
We have no second. So Kyle has been reappointed, we have not reappointed Libby or Miles, which leaves us two vacancies on this board. Okay. Thank you both, thank you for coming. All right, we need to move on. Board action items. We vote annual reappointment of John Dorsey, Joan Dorsey, I apologize to the council and agent board, board term to expire 2027.
I move to reappoint Joan Dorsey to expire term, council and aging, new term to expire June 30th, 2027.
Second.
The motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Housekeeping item, we have a vote to add live entertainment license to current CBAA slash, who is the, I can't hear you. Excuse me. You can't hear, I'm sorry. Vote to add live entertainment license to current CBAA slash CB license package, Wolf's Den Sports and Entertainment LLC, doing business as Courtside Bar Grill, 340 Oak Street. Do we have anybody here to speak on this? No one? Sorry, information on this paperwork is all in session.
Yes.
Okay, any other information that we do need for this approval?
It's an interior music amendment to what they currently have, so there's no other requirements. And it's, it does not include Sundays.
Does not include what?
Sundays, just to be clear. And the owner has been informed of that. Okay. This suggested motion, someone wanted to read it.
I'll make a motion to vote to approve a live entertainment license at 340 Oak Street to be held by John Pier, how do we say it?
Portier?
Portier? Of Wolf's Den Sports and Entertainment LLC, doing business at Courtside Bar Grill, Monday through Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Second.
The motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Who seconded that?
Steve, I think. Vote to approve the minutes of June 12th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Town managers report.
So I have a few things this evening, I hope they will be very, very quick. Just want to point out to the board and members of the community that we, in the city of We just haven't met in that timeframe, so I want to just inform the public that if you're out in dawn or dusk, make sure that you're protected. Either wear long sleeves, long socks, make sure you have repellent on. For most people, West Nile isn't a major factor, but for some, it can, you know, it can cause serious illness, so make sure that you protect yourself with repellent. Other, my next item up is the lake water quality test. As the Board is aware, and some residents will be aware, that we had to close Stetson Pond last week because of a high bacteria count. We did all new tests, the new tests today are all very, very good. I mean, the bacteria counts are incredibly low on all of our ponds, so all of our ponds are open. So, please enjoy them.
Thank you.
The gas main work on High Street is nearing completion. I apologize for those who have to transition Barker, because it's been an absolute disaster, because they're making the connection from High to Barker, and they're cutting out into Barker, and it's plated as we speak this evening, so, but that will be complete relatively quick, which is really good news for us, so then we can make sure that the road is restored and back to normal. The final...
How often do they check the ponds?
Every week.
Is it tested weekly, right?
Every week, all summer, yep. And we've had a couple of hits, but generally, our pond's tested very well. Last year, we had to close ponds twice. This year, we had to close Stetson last week.
That's the earliest Stetson's ever closed.
Yeah, and it was a very high hit.
I know. And it closed on July 3rd.
Ironically, ironically, the test on Stetson this week was incredibly low, almost nil.
Wonderful.
It used to be big news, so. This chair went down, the ponds were closed, Channel 7 came to my driveway to interview the Channel 7 news about the ponds being closed. He pulled in Dan Ray of...
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Steps out of the truck, gets a buzz in his ear, said, "See you later." That was the day of the Springfield tornado. He's like, "That's way more important than pond closing." Priorities, so.
Thank goodness for that, I guess.
Final piece, the work on Center Street, Route 36, is back commencing. The final wires will be moved tomorrow, those poles will be taken out, and they will be beginning the milling, I say milling overlay, but it's really not a milling overlay, because it's the base course that they're milling and putting down a new base course. And as I described last time, the final coat will be awesome, because it's going to be an epoxy layered coat, which will be great for the town, so. People want to know timeline, we're telling them this season. So, it is, is on track for this season, very excited about that. There is some sidewalk work that needs to be completed, some curb cuts and some driveway transitions, but we're looking good.
What about the walls? I've heard from others...
So, I think most of the walls are very close.
They stopped. I think because of the Fourth of July week.
Yeah, they stopped because they stopped the project because of everything else that was going on.
Okay.
And they don't want to move walls, where they may have to do some millwork or stuff in between that, so that's why that's stopped.
I'm happy to tell people that.
But they're back at it, so. That's all I have.
How about the Lackey property, when we just started talking?
We're working it. We will be bringing a number of projects before the Conservation Commission in the next few weeks. A lot of the, we have all the estimates and engineering in for the work at the beaches, for the boat ramps, and that stuff, we have, engineering, it's not complete at Lackey, it's in its infancy still. We're still kind of back and forth with Conservation on whether we have to do the wetlands, well, we have to do a peer review of the wetlands.
I thought we were gonna do it.
We did not, we did, we marked the wetlands, but we did not do a peer review. I asked for a waiver on the peer review, because I didn't want to spend the money to do the peer review. When we use Merrill Engineering, who is the company that they always hire for peer review...
We're using it for a passive purpose, so can you tell me why they want a peer review?
So, ninety percent of it is passive. Obviously, the parking and the pavilion areas would be considered active. But you're right, the trails and all the backland, ninety percent, maybe even...
Do they have a particular issue, or we'd have to spend money on this peer review for what reason?
I don't know, Steve.
Which, second time. That's the second time, but the other direction.
So, I'm sorry. Steve, I'm sorry. Yeah, I honestly don't know. I mean, I will be before them within the next few weeks, several times, for different projects, for NOIs and order of conditions. We're hoping to streamline that process, and make that go as quickly as we can, so that we can get all of those boat ramps, and beaches, and parking areas, and everything else that's out there that we promised our residents will get done.
Anybody have any questions? Do we have any views on updates? Do we have any older new business? Yes, no?
No, I'm just frustrated, I'm just...
Do we have any community comment from the Board?
Can I make this save?
Do you have any comment from the PS?
Hello, I'm also on Sixth and Third Street. I know we've emailed in the past. I'm curious what's going on with the beaver problem. Money was...
So, we are actively working that.
And it's great that you said something about West Nile. It's a mess back there. There's no water movement, it's getting worse and worse by the day. 63 Oldham Street.
It's off of Oldham Street, down in...
I don't understand how this is not a DPW issue. The property was purchased for drainage.
So, it can't be a DPW issue if it's related to beavers. Border Health, unfortunately, under state regulation, owns beavers. So, with the funding, and we've had experts, we're having experts come in and clean those, those waterways, it's in progress as we speak. I'll get another update tomorrow, get an update...
So, when the town purchased the property, it was for drainage. A hundred-year storm, is that gonna withstand a hundred-year storm with this drainage that's going in? That's what I was told.
The new work?
Yeah.
I don't have an answer to that. I can get you one, I don't have, I don't know.
I mean, it's just getting worse and worse. I don't understand.
So, the water from, let me just explain, so everybody understands what the issue is. The water from the center, there is drainage from the center, down Oldham Street, and into this area that we purchased long before my tenure.
Does it want to go to the cemetery?
Yeah.
Yes. It used to go to the Tentiwood Chit.
So, it goes into this area, just down, what's your house number?
63.
So, just before 63, it goes into a waterway, and that waterway has several series of drainage out past the Herring Run, and it has some large drainage areas through these ponded locations. The water drains into a pond, it drains into another area, and then out, and finally out into, behind the Herring Run, into that area. What's happened is the beavers have been, there's huge pipes and huge drainage areas in there, the beavers have been clogging. So, at the fall, you may recall, last year, we got $10,000 for beaver management, and we've hired experts to come in and design for us areas, so that water will continue to drain in lieu of the beavers. So, and the reason it's not a DPW issue is because under the statute, it has to be the Border Health.
Who did we hire?
Forget the consultant's name, but...
Have they already come out?
Yeah, yeah, no, they're actively working. It's in progress right now.
Yeah, but it's a touchy subject. Since we changed, since the state changed the law, so you couldn't trap beavers...
Yeah.
People's septic systems are getting ruined, all around Massachusetts.
And I've spoken to beaver, people who trap beavers, they're on a first-name basis in Plymouth and Halifax.
With the beavers?
No, with the town, they walk into town hall.
I'm sorry.
They walk into town hall, and you guys would know that person by his name. So, I just don't understand why Pembroke is afraid to trap beavers. It's a drainage issue.
I don't...
And if you plant a building where the Shepherd's Funeral Home is, where's that drainage going? More drainage going down through the cemetery and out into my backyard?
More than one, yeah.
And my yard is getting flooded.
We're not afraid to trap beavers, there is a, it goes, Border Health, State Border Health, back to local Conservation Commission.
I've had an issue with Gino down there, I mean, it's, he's building...
Let's not share that here, but...
Well, no, I mean, it's public knowledge, I mean, the guy is building, he was building huts out of the sticks. He tells me I can't touch anything, but he's building stuff. It doesn't make any sense.
So, can we, or can we not trap them?
You can trap them.
We can trap them, but only at certain parts of the year, within a season.
Okay, is that the season now?
No.
What's the season?
It's earlier in the year.
It ends in April, starts in October, November.
Can we start doing it going forward? Or can we reach out to other towns to figure out best practices?
I think it's a subject for another night, but only if we get permission from all of those Boards.
From Border Health, Conservation?
Well, Conservation's gonna be tough, because the guy, the state went out there, a gentleman from the state went out there, the biologist was out there, went out there with them, and they, I don't even know how they're not in trouble. The DPW did first go up there to try to move some of the dams.
And was cited by Conservation.
But how did he not get cited?
He did, DPW did.
No, how didn't Conservation get cited, Conservation?
Conservation did not get cited.
I mean, I have pictures, I mean, it's...
As the Town Manager, I don't control Boards and Committees, just to be clear. I control town employees.
We can't control them if we're not told. If this has been going on long enough, or a beaver that clogged a major drainage system in the center of town, and I'm just finding out about it by accident?
We had this...
You didn't tell us?
We had this discussion when we asked for the funding.
But this is the first I heard of this issue.
Well, this is the issue.
Well, the funding said drainage, never said anything about beavers. It just said drainage, and everybody knew that it was caused by beavers.
So, Border Health, Concom, what was the third?
State Border Health.
And so, have we spoken with any of these?
All three.
And what was the issue?
We're working through it, working through it.
What was their response?
So, the Border Health and State Border Health have had no issue.
Okay.
Conservation is the issue?
What's Conservation's response?
There isn't a formal response.
He hasn't been down there since the state set something.
Why do we get them in here? Why did we get them in here before April, if we knew it was a problem?
This has been going on for three years.
Can we request that they do come in?
Yes.
On the next meeting?
We can.
Let's do that.
Let's, okay, if you want, I just...
I don't think they should be there, I mean, you just said something about West Nile. Plymouth County was down by House, not even three weeks ago.
Well, you don't think Gino should be there?
No, I just don't, no.
I agree with you, 100%. We've told them not to be there.
Yeah, and he hasn't been, but it's...
I told them not to be there.
I mean, mosquito control was down there, and they said they did an aerial view, and they've never seen this water there before.
So, we need to have a conversation with Conservation.
But that's not, that's not just this area, that's true all over town.
I understand, but we need our conversation with Conservation about this.
Because that area is pretty flat, that's the old airport.
Can we, we can ask a discussion off line?
It usually get drained out there, and Melissa, Melissa used to live back there and suppose she...
Yeah, Melissa's property, there was an old airport or that's...
It became a farm.
Do we need a larger meeting?
It is a bigger discussion, I'll just leave it at that.
It's frustrating, that there's water might back out.
For me as well, for me as well.
And it sits there.
Have you gone to Conservation?
I've talked to them, I've gone to the Border Health. Everybody keeps putting me to the Border Health.
And that's because the Border Health owns beavers.
So, Bill, this Board can't help you if you don't bring us in on it, and if you're frustrated, I can't help you unless you tell me. You have to understand that there are, if the planning Board has something going on, they're an elected Board, they can't do anything about it. Conservation's appointed. You just found out tonight what happens when you're appointed.
That's what brought me up here, because I'm one of those guys that sit on my couch and I watch these meetings.
God bless you, sir.
I was one of those guys, so you know, I'm gonna go up there tonight, my wife should help for me, and now I hear I am, and it's just...
Good, good for you.
Well, coincidentally, I have a meeting with the Chair of Conservation this weekend anyhow, so I would be happy to discuss this with her, since I'm gonna see her anyway, and just see what's going on.
It's just, it's getting worse.
Can we get briefed on that, too, and then have them come in?
I just don't think the drainage is gonna do it. It's only gonna get worse.
Yeah, because I don't know anything about the issue, they could be, they could have an airtight case of why they haven't taken any action yet, because I don't know about it. But if it's dragging feet, then, you know, we have a little sway over that. If it's laws, rules, or regulations, this Board can't...
It's a conversation. We have a conversation.
Yeah, for another meeting. All right, thank you. We're on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're sir.
Do we have any more community comments? Or move on?
Katrina, Delaney, just in regards to the water, and it might be something that's already[1624.97]